November first, two thousand sixteen nine AM. City of Statesboro City Council meeting. We'll begin our meeting today by asking Councilman Sam Jones if he would please lead us in our invocation and election allegiance. Councilman Jones.
Certainly. That is correct. I'm fortunate to say thank you for creating the universe and you only got a son. Thank you. It gives opportunity to come inside the State's Borough City Council. Council chambers through the business of the city of war. Ask for guidance, wisdom, and courage to serve all our citizens, our staff members, and our guests to the best of our abilities as we sit here in the reason together. Get together all of our children, Sam. Amen. Page of this.
To the bride of the United States of America. And to the Republic for what it stands. One nation, under God. In the middle of the nation that is strong.
Okay, we're going to move to agenda item three, which is recognition and public representation. So we're going to begin with recognition of the employee of the court, Mr. Grant.
Good morning, Council. Director of Human Resources, Jackie Grant. This morning, I have an employee who, this is certainly long due, and has been a really hard worker, and just came through a nomination from someone from a different department, but speaks highly of this person. And they said that Tammy Rushing consistently goes above and beyond her job in Public Works Department and with the City of Statesboro. For this reason, we would like to nominate Tammy Rushing, Administrative Assistant of the Public Works Department for Employee of the Court. Tammy Rushing has been employed in the City of Statesboro for twenty-four years, come July 21st, two thousand sixteen. During her time, Tammy Rushing has performed her job of Administrative Assistant for Public Works Department and outside her job title, assists in helping at the shop, parts counter, events in the department, order supplies, uniforms, a member of the Employee Safety Advisory Committee, and running the employee breakfast and lunchtime, as well as the employee picnic, and handles surplus auction of the deals for all City of Statesboro departments, and the list continues. I will add to that list. Tammy is, although everybody at Public Works speaks very highly of her and across the city, but it's very evident, you see Tammy and how she interacts with employees and with the employees at Public Works. Outside the City of Statesboro, she directs three bullet counting pageants. And this nominee said that Tammy is the person that makes sure everyone has all the essential tools needed to perform their day-to-day functions. And if everybody can kind of do a hand, Miss Tammy Rushing is our employee of the court.
Would you like to say anything?
I can't. I do love my job, I love the people I work with, I love it from the day I started. Um, I'll help anybody anyway, legally, I'm here.
One more picture, one more picture, hold on. You get a hundred points.
You don't have to go left, 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 to right.
I can do that.
Okay, our next thing on the agenda is to recognize the Employee Safety Advisory Committee, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I'm going to ask each of these individuals to come up here. All of the members are not allowed to be here, but you have a majority of our members here today. As you guys know, the last meeting, we went over kind of where we've been with safety, how we've addressed that, and some of the success that we've had with that, as well as where we are going with safety in the future at the city. And a large part of that has been the contribution of the Employee Safety Advisory Committee. I think if you were to miss not to acknowledge them for all the contributions in helping the city get success and get a safe place for all employees to work. So I'm going to call each of these individuals up. And I'm just going to give them a hand once each, all the individuals that have come up. So Tammy Rushing. Joey Glan. Leah Harden. Stella Roberson. Cindy Clifton. Solomon Gonzalez. Brad Deal. Kiara Martin. Is that everybody who's seen? Just want to make sure. This is our Employee Safety Advisory Committee. If everybody could give them a hand. And one more person, and I'm leaving out, I mentioned them the last time, Mr. Christina, Christina Johnson, she is the leader of the Employee Safety Advisory Committee. She's the one who kind of holds the glue together and ensures that the meetings happen. So we appreciate her today, and she was the one who kind of made everybody kind of get together today and ensure that everybody was here. So if you give her a hand as well.
Thanks, Jeff. I mean, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. Our workers' comp claims have gone down significantly, and we appreciate all of the our employees doing that you do on the action style of the equation to make that happen. So thank you very much. Ms. Sue, do we have anybody that's registered to make a public comment regarding an agenda item? I keep. Agenda item five is a consent, a consideration of motion to approve the consent agenda. I will ask Council to please review that consent agenda and then ask for motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please take a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda is passed. Before we get started with the meat of our meeting, I'll take complaints. Councilman Riggs is up with us today because he is representing the City of Statesboro since we visit our new sister cities in Italy. I'll read a text to you, so I think he's having a pretty good time. Based on this text I got yesterday. Well, it's not on the agenda, so I'm not going to ask for a motion, however, listen, I've learned over the last three years to screw a lot of stuff. So here's what, here's what the motion says. Please ask Council to appropriate two million lira from the city to buy an apartment building in Monte Compatry so we'll have a place to stay anytime we come. So suffice it to say, he must be building some good relationships over there and bringing some goodwill from Statesboro, and they seem to be treating him very well, nicely as well. So we wish him the best of luck and ask him to free, please bring us a slide up, a PowerPoint of his trip when he gets back, and it'll be appropriate this way. I'm sure he's doing great jobs, and we appreciate his efforts on our behalf. All right, agenda item six. And by the way, I did say I'd ask for a motion, but no, it's good. So agenda item six, public hearing and consideration of motion to approve Resolution two zero one six dash three seven. I'm going to begin by asking for a public hearing on Resolution two zero one six dash three seven. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, the public hearing is now open. Brad, can you please come up and introduce our problem there? Okay.
Brad Deal, City Engineer. General mine office still here, just to bring his map up, make it clear what we're discussing with this issue, which really, I think, is more of a housecleaning kind of issue, but American, American Way is... American Way is the short street that is next to the Parker's Convenience Store. This is the bypass, this is Brampton Avenue. And the area that we're looking at is actually past the end of pavement, which is in the kind of undeveloped portion of American Way. When the roadway was originally due to the city for American Way, I don't think anybody knew how this property was going to develop back here where the proposed hotel is going to go. So the roadway was due to the city and laid out such a way that there would be like a dead-end hammerhead turnaround at the end of the street. This is the flat showing the roadway that the city has. So the hammerhead turnaround was configured so that a car could kind of pull into this area and then back up and turn around. We didn't really know how the property was going to develop at that time. Last year, we got the proposed plans for a hotel that's going to go in this property. And as you can see, there really wasn't a need for the hammerhead because of the way the hotel property was laid out. And during a public hearing for variance for the property, I think Council expressed a desire not to have a hammerhead at this location. So the site was designed so that traffic could just, instead, just kind of flow into the parking lot and circulate back out, like I said. With that being the case, we don't really need the highlighted, as you can see, the highlighted portion of the roadway. So this, this item is just to basically abandon that and let it become part of the hotel parking lot. In other words, offer that, after the city abandons that property, we can offer it to the joint property owner, which would be the hotels. State law says that municipalities can dispose of the property no longer needed for public road purposes and may offer the property to the abutting landowner. And that's what Engineering is recommending that we do with this piece of property. And I didn't want to ask any questions out yet.
Thanks, Brad. Is there anybody here today that would like to speak regarding this application, Resolution two zero one six dash three seven?
The question is, when you offer to the abutting property owner, when you offer to purchase or give them? I think, I won't get corrected if I'm wrong here, but state law says that the city can offer it back to the property owner that we acquired it from at the purchase price, or can you help me out a little bit?
Or the abutting landowner.
Or the abutting landowner.
Probably better mark. It was gifted, I wouldn't. Right. So it's okay just to do a like transaction back.
Okay.
It essentially just takes the responsibility of the offload, that's right.
That's right.
Let us see, about center market value?
Probably nothing.
Nothing, because you can't do anything with it, based on where it is. So basically, we're saying we don't need it because of the way you designed the road, and therefore you can have it back into our inventory.
Right, and the city wouldn't, wouldn't actually want this anymore now that we don't need it as a turnaround area for traffic. So it would just be a liability more than anything.
Okay, does anybody have anything further, like I said before, does anybody here to speak regarding this resolution, either for or against?
And one thing I wanted to mention also, there's no city utilities in there we're talking about, so there will be no easement needed or anything like that.
Thank you, Brad. If not, then do I have a motion to close the public hearing on Resolution two zero one six dash thirty-seven?
Salute.
Do I have a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor, please take a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is closed. Do I have any discussion by Council before asking for a motion? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution two zero one six dash thirty-seven?
Salute.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brad. Agenda item seven, consideration of motion to approve Resolution two zero one six thirty-eight. Ms. Cindy.
Cindy Best, Director of Funds. As you know, the City of Statesboro received the two thousand sixteen Community Development grant, and as a requirement of accepting that grant, we have to establish a separate banking account for this most.
Why don't you let folks know real quickly? Because of the hurricane, it was not going down to accept it and all the stuff that normally comes with this grant. Just a little background.
I think Mr. Frank Neal and...
Right, he's not here.
He's not, I think, actually accepting.
Director. I think they're all they are.
Okay, well, let's fill out the agenda next week, or excuse me, in two weeks, just to have a brief discussion about that.
Did it fight her? Yes.
He's in his binder, so we'll go ahead and let folks know about that. Is this a big deal? This particular grant, I believe, is in Council Jones's area. So let's do a presentation on that. Okay, does anybody have any questions from Cindy about opening up the box? Yeah, for the minute. If not, do I have a motion to approve Resolution two zero one six dash thirty-eight?
Salute.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I keep. Motion carries. A consideration of motion to approve Resolution two zero one six dash thirty-nine regarding a couple of positions. Mr. Corrigan, if you could please come in.
Director of Human Resources. What you're seeing here, Pacquiao, Council, is two job descriptions as well as a resolution for the reclassification of administrative assistant position in the administration office, and then to executive assistant. And you'll see the job description for Dead Keep, Statesboro Bullet Beautiful Coordinator, from which last meeting you approved the exceptional program again to the City of Statesboro. So this position, the Keep Statesboro Bullet Beautiful Coordinator position, is to look in that program. Any questions?
Does it create one job or two jobs?
It's creation of the Keep Statesboro Bullet Beautiful Coordinator position. I may let Robert speak to that a little bit in terms of that program, that position will be created and placed under the Employee and Development Department.
I can talk a little bit about that one, pretty good. Oh, and also, the other, I think Councilman Judge was asking, is it two positions? And it was one position for that, but another one is to reclassify an assistant position.
That's right.
Two positions, two jobs in that particular area?
No.
No, no, no. The executive system will be in the administration office. So the administrative system position will be, it'll be upgraded to an executive assistant position, and then the other position is created in the development department. Both of them being created through resolution and amending our classification.
So the executive, just to be clear, just the executive position is going to serve the city manager. Who does that position serve?
That position will serve the city manager, City Attorney, Director of Human Resources, as well as the Deputy City Manager.
Okay. Any other positions? I can speak to the other position a little bit. We were able to create the Keep Bullet Beautiful position because we got some money from Keep Georgia People. And the ten thousand dollars is going to go directly to that. The city's going to add a five thousand to it, so it's going to be a very, very, very part-time position. I mean, just to be honest, it's going to be a relatively small part-time position that will be housed here, but mainly its job is to focus on the education, litter control, and how recycling stuff in the schools. That's going to be its primary function, and then to do the, the great American cleanup once a year. So that's what that position is. So, did you want to add anything to that one?
No, it's very part-time.
Don't even try to get too excited.
And the change to the executive, the short system, is going to cost, or a change?
It'll be, it'll be a grade of one-ten, and it's about an entry level, thirty-four thousand. That's the median in our area. We did, we did an external market survey of some of our peers, Belgium, City Savannah, State Regiment Hill, OTC, Regis Tratt, and Baricon, just to name a few. I don't have them all in my head, but we do an internal, look at internal data, as well as we look at, do an external market survey.
I'll take it, you'll take it first, will you? Each, each one of our positions at very full value.
That's correct. Approximately about the fifty percent value of our region.
Okay.
All right, if there are no further questions for Mr. Grant, do I have a motion to approve Resolution two zero one six dash thirty-nine?
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, agenda item nine, is consideration of motion to award a contract to White Delta Inc. coming around forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Man Collins, Director of Water and Waste Water. This is the last piece of the puzzle for Burnet Lime Slurp Feed System, which will make a system that's fully automatic, we're running on manual right now. We think, once we make it automatic, if based on pacing the flow or pH, we should be able to safely recycle lime, not a lime. Right now, we're just setting a percentage of lime feed based on what we think, based on the number we're getting at the air flow and the air retention basis. This will be the last piece of the puzzle where it is, and it's called a whole electrical, the control wires, and also some equipment provided by Revere Associates, which is our SCADA down there. We had two beds, White Delta, forty-seven, one fifty-three, fourteen. HAC Company was seventy-eight, seven thirty, so we're recommending a work a little bit. We actually, the first time this went out of bed, we got no beds at all. We had to reach out to some of the contractors, the engineers, resulting in we reached out to them. We got two of them to submit beds, and we're comfortable with it. So the electrical side, engineers said around one forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. Any questions?
I think I have one quick question. Once this is done, is that no lime slurry system in? From purchasing any of the cars, to purchasing the lines?
This is the last thing.
Okay.
And we complete it automatically.
Okay.
And we're hoping down the road that we can...
That's a bad question. It seems like we've been talking about this lime slurry down for six years.
This was the last minute, so we weren't anticipating having to fund something like this. We violated permit as far as a money goes, and we had to get this demo unit in. They were good enough, the company was good enough to let us keep the demo in until we had the front unit in, so we had to bid it out in different places. One of them, the cell source for the equipment, the Burnet Lime Equipment is proprietary, and then bid out the slab, SCADA. We actually did cell source on SCADA. And in the slab, we had a little bit of resolve on these other preference. We did concrete out, twin-prod concrete, fantastic trucking, fantastic work, and then electricals the last one. What we did is put in about eight months worth of lease purchase in this budget size. Hopefully, once this piece of puzzle is done, is approved, I can look and see, we may be able to pay this equipment off sooner than eight months to avoid some of that interest costs. And I believe I'm going to have enough money to be all approved. The two projects could be reallocated in this one, so initially.
Okay.
And it'll save us a bit of our interest costs.
You can turn it all back to the two beds, or such. That always makes me wonder when two people look at projects, they're so far along.
Yeah, actually, when White Delta's representative was here, he didn't have his envelope sealed. He was waiting on a call to either up or increase our lower rate price before he submitted the area in first quarter. It's told to White Delta, they dropped, dropped the price ten thousand dollars, but they left twenty over, twenty, thirty thousand dollars on the table. He was a little disappointed. He said, the last minute, they dropped ten thousand dollars, and I was glad he did. So I don't believe they were leaving communication to twenty-two of them, I don't think it was to drop that much.
No, it's, you know, anytime there's that big of a spread, that's right.
Well, we should just get the thing about interest, do the installation.
I think White Delta's just a little more familiar with working with us than Sat has it doesn't much more with.
Well, that and the fact that we paid very quick, unlike other entities that they work with. As long as they can get me an invoice or parcel, pay request on a Monday or Tuesday, I can get on the check, cut the crap, right? And that's very, very easy.
There's no hundred dollars session, then do I have a motion to award a contract to White Delta Inc. in the amount of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and fourteen cents per agenda item nine?
Salute.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, Diana, agenda item ten, consideration of motion to award a contract to Aqua Aerobic Systems in the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and eight cents for a cell source purchase.
Hey, this is the actual filter we put in in two thousand thirteen, and just to make it simple on the reading, not the memo, I think that's what I was trying to think. In two thousand thirteen, the city's existing Detro Sand Antitrack filter replaced four new Aqua Aerobic coughing filter, which is the top of the line supposedly now, a filter out there. The cough on these filters was designed to last five, seven years, but it's been failing over the last year, even though SAD has followed the best cleaning practices as per manufacturers' bags. The fabric is riveting at the seams and a lot of solids passed through the effort, although the plant has maintained permanent supply of solids, which has had an added provide reuse water for the sort of system of cover, I think. We had good results yesterday, we got good results on solids today, should be able to start providing reuses. The company did come in and put a ten micron fabric at no cost on one of the filters, thinking it made need to reduce standards, it does not, so we're going back with five micron, which is the newest fabric they got, with the open back, instead of a closed back. Don't make any difference on that. If you say that, house the biomass on the inside of the factory like this, the closed back. But I, as well as my key man, as an operation person, have met on several occasions, he communicated in several conference calls over the last year with Representative Aqua Aerobic Systems team and the manufacturer representative, John Baker, and such yet, trying to fund the sum resolved to the issue and have the factory replaced. I advise them to wait, expect a good fact there, by Aqua Aerobic Systems team, to introduce a proposal that would be of benefit to the city. Sharing height, custom cover representatives of Aqua Aerobic Systems team, recently sent a proposal to resolve the issue that I am comfortable in accepting. The proposal's acting more than I was expecting from Aqua Aerobic. The proposal, which is attached, allows a one-time, a one-time goodwill discount, a big percentage against all parts required for change of the backlot shoes and cloth for all the filters. Also requests that they allow a discount for thirty-six additional, additional filter costs for spare replacements, which they own. That being said, I would recommend that Mayor Council approve of that cell source contract as part of what we can't get from anybody else. And hopefully, it'll just get us back in, in, in good shape, and have the quality effort that we used to have. We had higher solids in DOD, which we need. Our EDF program plants, the reuse has a lower parameter on solids that you have to meet, which is a five number. We've got twenty and thirty on the plants, we've been running, we've got twenty-seven and nine part remaining solids. So hopefully, it's a more solid issue. Questions?
So what you're saying is, once you put these on, you can go back to the reuse board industry?
We should be able to, and I would like, if, if any way possible, I'd like to get
We should be able to, and I would like it, if any way possible, I'd like to get your signature on these agreements. Today's my new expert, I've had all of you get us that policy. But I'm, I'm uncomfortable getting towards other reuse boards. We have several days that we need to reuse standards. And if we could get at least two of these filters swapped out, that's enough for us to treat all the waste we're coming in at this time. Reserve up to five million dollars for that.
Man, you've been on your job.
It's been busy.
All right. So do anybody else have any common questions for, uh, Mr. Collins?
What, uh, and what's, uh, what's the difference between a sand filter and a fabric filter, and why did we switch?
The, we had six Dacros tra- what's called traveling bridge filters. It's old technology, they were putting in like twenty-five years ago, they were steel, coated, coated steel. The problem, the biggest problem we had, they, they filtered pretty good, but they, they were coated steel. It's two, two, two calls ago to, to stainless. Normally, we go with stainless on every one. But these were two calls, they were huge, probably eighteen foot wide, about, about forty foot long, there were six of them. And it has about thirty-six partitions where you gotta travel and bridge and go over and drop down on one section and clean that section, it was scoured with the top of the sand, get his vacuum solids off. But what happened, the, the nature of the waste we deal with, it started eating through that steel on the inside, getting it, and on the outside. And we were able to go in a sand blast, repaint it, and recoat it, we did that four, five times. It started, uh, rusting out through the bottom, and it filtered approximately thirty, forty dollars a ton of each with the sand on the side. So we went with the latest technology, uh, which was the Aqua Aerobics was the best, we found out. That's what most, you know, type of, they're very simple design, they're expensive filters, they're expensive to maintain, but that's the nature of these we deal with, the water, waste, and everything. Once you get the equipment in, you gotta go through that supplier, that manufacturer. We, we were happy with the, the fabric. So it wasn't lasting very long, as I said, even though we were doing exactly what they said. They, they come in, they take the place, like, one filter with ten microns, it worked. They replaced all the vacuum shoes. And that didn't help any, not to map anything, they were running too high the vacuum. They, they feel like this new fabric is, is gonna resolve the issue we had with solids. Hope, we're used to seeing less of one milligram of liquid solids leaving that site. When I see it, it's two and three, I get concerned, even though we're still way under perfect. We wanna put in string the best quality air flow filter.
So you're saying our product that you've been talking about today is the apple of the industry?
That's what we understand. I mean, before we went with this, uh, Aqua Aerobics, we actually visited four or five sites. And it, it, we, when we go visit sites, we get the operator to weigh from management, we get the management personnel, our management personnel get to name them, people that frame the weight and the management, and where their, their questions are answered on us. And we had, I mean, everyone was crazy, so we definitely had a great success. And Aqua Aerobics, this is the biggest installation filter in the southeast. They wanted this to be a showplace. But, uh, probably since they've known us, I said, "You don't want to send anybody's fake product here right now. Hey, y'all do something about it." They heard what we said, they're offering this one-time discount, which is fantastic. And also, I'll tell you, they wanted thirty thousand dollars to, uh, send in two technicians to assist my management to replace the fabric. I got them to drop that, we can take your, uh, we have to name this, we can take your replacement of the fabric. All of this is seventy-two pie-shaped pieces, that's mounted in a drum. And each pie-shaped piece has like a sock that, it looks like carpet. It goes over that pipe, it's knee-bolting. That, the inlet comes in, filter, and travels through this, uh, cloth into a pipe, then out to the air flow leak point. And it just dissipates, you be, or thought.
Got you. I just don't wanna be the person who applies it. So tell me that's gonna be on the road.
They'll, well, usually they'll bring the unit, hold it around, they fill it with clear water, leak it, and they fill it with clear water again, before, and then they let it dry out for the maintenance side of it. And we got two of them down now, we give the fabric in, they're already dried out, ready to...
Lesson.
It's, it's a pretty tight order to get in and do this, but my management is out of willing to do this. And we're gonna pay thirty thousand dollars for the place right there.
Oh, gracious. Okay, does anybody have any other cor- further questions of Dan?
You can go any more detail there if you'd like.
No, I was just gonna say, it's just been quite a long, I think we've all gotten big, uh, big...
I think y'all will be coming out to plan, give her full two hours to work. We'll get y'all the better of the hand, the, the equipment, while we're getting all the cell source in one time.
Okay, do I have a consideration of motion to abort contract to Aqua Aerobic Systems Inc. for the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and eight cents per agenda item ten? Do you have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Diana, for that lesson. Basically, it comes in icky, and you filter out the icky and send it out back?
We do what money pays, we get it from my bank.
There you go. All right, agenda item eleven, other business from City Council, do, uh, anybody, does anyone on the City Council have a, uh, something they want for a comment? Okay. We'll move to agenda item twelve, with the city managers' comments.
Uh, we've been working on, uh, amendment, and an amendment of chapter forty-two for quite some time, according to Tim, and, uh, we would just like to discuss that today before we bring it forward for, for adoption. So if you have any comments, I would be happy to take those, and I'll turn it over to Tim.
Thank you, Ken Grant, Fire Chief, State Department.
And I will, I will say one thing, we'll quit pretty starting, Tim. I don't, don't know how long this discussion's gonna go, and I don't say that in a negative way. I'm just, I've got to scoot out of here for about a split moment, so if I get up and leave you this, is that then regarding your discussion?
Okay, well, I'm, I'm simply gonna hand you guys some stuff, and tell you how great of a deputy chief we have, because he pretty much has built this from the ground up.
Okay.
And I might have him come up and answer any questions, and, and tell you, you know, really, uh, the need to, to revise. Real quick, I know, I know we sent some emails, but this is just, you know, a nice neat little package for you. The first page is the current chapter forty-two, which you'll notice is really one sentence. And, um, basically, what we are proposing, and, and again, I have Chief Shaw come up and answer any questions, but, uh, really, uh, I think the, the biggest piece is, is that we're not really doing anything different than what we're doing now. There's nothing in this ordinance that we're not already doing. What we're doing is formalizing it and putting it out there for all to know. This is, this is how we are conducting our business, and, um, you know, how we are addressing, um, the, the codes and our services. So, uh, Chief Shaw will come up, and I'll just turn it over to him and answer any questions. Uh, again, just real briefly, this is really just a discussion, uh, give you guys an opportunity to look over it, ask any questions. Uh, we've worked very closely with, uh, Allen and both the city managers, and we feel pretty comfortable, it felt like it was to a point where we could bring it before you guys, and I bet you, uh, see what you felt.
Morning, Mayor Council. Ron Shaw, FBI, Chief, State Department. As Chief Brown stated, uh, we've been working on this for a good while, as you can see, the, their current chapter forty-two is, is pretty minimal, and it actually, uh, references to nineteen ninety-one fire codes in there. So it's been, you know, twenty-five years since it's been updated. Another thing was that, uh, there, there are really three reasons why this ordinance is necessary. It's to provide the fire department with tools necessary to carry out our mission. By, uh, by protecting tenants and patients of buildings and, uh, commercial properties in Spadeboro. To help home, uh, help owners of buildings and businesses in Spadeboro. By helping them reduce liability, reduce revenue losses from the potential of the fire, 'cause, 'cause studies show that, uh, you know, upwards of eighty percent of, of businesses that, that experience a major fire, uh, never reopen. So it has a pretty good economic impact on, on the local economy. Also, it allows them to, uh, to continue to enjoy the lower insurance premiums from our ISO classification three. This also helps reduce firefighter, uh, or increase firefighter safety because of, uh, these systems and things that, that are likely to be in play, such as firewall, uh, you know, draft stopping, uh, fire blocking, things like that depict how fire travels through a building. So, and our tactics and all that are based on, on, on those things being in place. So, uh, it, it, that is another, a few benefits. Another, the second reason is, is you may not know, may or may not know, that ISO changed their grading schedule, a couple of years back, to, uh, how they grade a community on, and determine their public, uh, protection class, which we currently have a class three, which is, uh, a really good classification. One, uh, one of the major changes in that was in, uh, community risk reduction and, uh, uh, prior prevention efforts of the department. So we, uh, we feel like this is very necessary. There's actually five bonus points now in the grading schedule, never been bonus points in grading schedule before. And all five of those bonus points are in community risk reduction and prevention. So, uh, the adoption of, of current consensus standards and codes is essential to doing well and being prepared to the next evaluation. And also, in the latest edition of the state, adopted minimum fire codes, uh, they no longer adopt chapter one of the fire code, which dealt with the administration of the fire code. In other words, how that code is administered, you know, the authorities and things of the fire department, uh, is no longer in there. So really, all they deal with now is things that fall into their jurisdiction. They've got the administration of that in their code, but they don't have, uh, anything for local jurisdictions, so. And I wanna reiterate what Chief Brown said, there's nothing in this ordinance that we don't currently do now. So, uh, so it really, it's just putting in ordinance what, how we're gonna administer those codes. Basically, we pretty much the same believe management for the last ten years. So, uh, with that, I guess I'll, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
So actually, what we're trying to do is, is to have this, so when, when people want to build something or remodel things, they can, they can take a look at this, and then, and then we're sure that as a department, we will consistently apply these. So it isn't, uh, it isn't so much depending on the situation of the, or the particular person who might be taken in a look at at from, from departments, we point, is, is we all can be consistent. We should make it easier for everybody, that's the hope.
I think you mentioned earlier about ISO classification in Spadeboro now. What is it?
It's class three.
Puts us in the top ten percent in the nation.
Yeah, it's, it's in the top ten percent of the nation for performance, so, so it's a really good question. And like I say, homeowners and businesses, they, they, see, built it twenty, financially, from, is that right?
So this, you know, new ordinance could give us a written plan, so it happens with community reduction, community risk reduction?
That's correct, uh, and, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a multifaceted thing, you know, this is just one portion of it. The rest of it is public education, uh, our, uh, cause, uh, and origin determination of fires. Uh, if we see patterns, things like that, how we deal with that, follow up with it. Uh, one great example, uh, is DeBaymont Inn down here. We had two fires, working structural fires in DeBaymont Inn. Both, uh, were determined to be from, uh, the wired unit, uh, heating and air units. So what we did is followed up with the, uh, with code enforcement and the building official, and went in and required them to bring those electrical standard up to code, and we haven't had an issue since. So, uh, we had those two structural fires within three or four months of each other, caused by the same thing. Those efforts are, are what ISO are beginning to look at more closely.
Does this affect the commercial buildings?
Correct.
And the second one, what's this in place, whether it be like a grand father, he knows, most of those transitions now, will go back in, can you talk to him, go back in the table, with this new code?
Uh, this is not actually a new code, uh, it's the same number of codes, and really, what we're dealing with here, the building codes and things like that deal with the building when it's being built.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and basically, they're held to that standard under that, under that current code, uh, at the time it's constructed. The fire life safety codes, the only change you'll see, there's maintenance requirements in the fire code, which requires the things that were in there initially, uh, to be maintained and kept up and inspected and certified, or will try to be certified. The only other change you see sometimes in the life safety code is if they have a large property loss or a large loss of life event, uh, somewhere, they'll update that code, and it'll require a little bit of updating, but we've always took the approach of working with folks, and, you know, give them time, and, uh, be as, be as proactive as we can, and, and helping those folks achieve those things. And it's typically, uh, it's typically nothing major, different.
I think really maybe, I don't wanna say confusion here a little bit, but maybe a little bit of confusion is, what's, this has moved our ordinances?
That's correct.
So y'all been out enforcing the fire code, but we haven't had a formal ordinance to allow you to do that. Not allow you, that's not the right word, but when the city adopts its own ordinance to deal with the fire code, is that correct?
I, I... What, what, I think what you're saying is currently, uh, we've been using the state minimum, adopting the administration of the codes, which has, you know, ninety-nine percent of this, and more in it. Which, now, the state does not adopt that administration portion of, of the fire code. So in the absence of that, we currently really do not have anything as far as adopted or, or...
So we don't have an ordinance addressing?
That's correct.
Okay, the fire code is, addressing the administration of it and the workings of the fire, those kinds of things?
That's correct.
So that's what this accomplishes?
That's correct.
It formalizes what you're doing within our ordinances, and allows some enforcement there. Whereas before, that was a little fuzzy?
That's correct.
Okay.
So just, just to be clear, the, the state law and the adoption of state laws gave us the, uh, authority to do it. I think what, one of the points you were pointing out is, is, uh, where was that in our ordinances? And, and that's what we just went back to, was the state, oh, well, it's in state, so that's what we're gonna do. How we, how we followed up and make sure things were getting done is where we ran into a problem. And, and we've had these conversations before about the fire alarms, the excessive fire alarms going five, six, and seven times, the re-inspections, going in, you know, five, six, seven times to, to get folks to do what they're supposed to do, to, uh, you know, address issues, um, and that's really all we could do. There was nothing, nothing in place for us to, uh, encourage them or push them along to do what, what is needed, other than just to keep aggravating them until they finally did it. So that, we, we haven't been out there, I guess Mayor's what I'm trying to say, we haven't been out there just kinda making up our own rules, you know, enforcing a bunch of stuff that we, we weren't, uh, that wasn't appropriate. We've had the state minimum codes to fall back on. This is just formalizing and basically saying, this is how we're going to, this is how we're gonna manage, you know, our processes and, you know, appeals, and if you don't agree, and all those kinds of things.
So to be clear, the purpose of today is to bring this forward and say, this is what we're proposing, and then obviously to adopt it, we've got through the public hearing process to do that. So I just want everybody to be clear, there's no, not permitting motions to adopt this today. This is simply an introduction of the ordinance as you would like to see it proposed, is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and if in the next couple of weeks you have comments you wanna make, if you could call Tim, or if you need to add, or delete, or whatever, if you need to...
That was...
This is actually, we started talking about this two years ago, and part of this you came when they were talking about, uh... came when they were talking about excessive loads in buildings. And what do you do when you pull up and there's four hundred people into my personal building and really don't have orders to do that, and you have state Fire Code, state can't do that? I think that's when it came out that there really was sort of a missing link here to doing your job, and the job is having a follow-up on things, being an ordinance, because you want to set a rules on which to operate under, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Another goal is really to be transparent, to let, to answer those questions before they even are asked by developers or, you know, engineers, architects, they, they know how you calculate certain things, or how you come to certain decisions or processes of building that. So, that's the other thing, is we're, we're hoping this will clear up a lot of confusion, make it more efficient for, for everyone involved.
Is this the rules to play by?
That's correct.
Okay. So, is the hope, yeah, I want to ask Mr. White on here, do we want to bring this back for its first public hearing at our next meeting? Is that what we all want?
That's what we would like to do.
Okay. All right. And please bring suggestions, whatever, and take opportunity to, to lead it over next week or two.
Yep. If you have any comments or ordinance, or if you can make those adjustments before you hand out, it would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate how you work on that, well.
Thank you. Yes, it's been, it's been about a ten year effort. This combination of a lot of bidding for several, you know, city managers and even department heads, so it's, it's been a long process, but I think it will really work.
Okay.
Okay, Robert, you want to do this little, I mean, a number of ideas?
Very brief. Something based on oils, for the engineer and public workers today, updating on the debris removal, and it looks like we're at about two percent of the worst around, around the city, not just the extra time because of the type of debris that we're dealing with, or in some cases, kind of in higher trees that we have to kind of remove, but there may be good progress. It's just, we're looking about, maybe about every four or five days. So, we're halfway, of course, we're missing around as well, hopefully, that's. And the second idea is, public works is overseeing some sidewalk repairs right now. We're getting a contractor every year, getting anything they like, that they utilize. We're going to do roughly one point three miles, and then about a hundred and eleven spots, and certainly more than that, but that's what we're doing this round. We want to do about five streets worth. So, during that contract, we've been down now, and we find the Wood Parish Street should be finished, resurfacing today, of course, we don't even, we, um, strike it, we'll be nice. Now, uh, slow down. Speeds, and then you're way up, yeah. Should be there.
Traffic calm, I wish.
Well, anything about the vehicle.
I'll deal with it. Oh, yeah. Just James, just let us know.
Yep, you have, we have one more? Yep?
Jeffrey Grant, Director of Human Resources. Just wanted to let everybody know about the downtown station for a holiday celebration. I guess we do this every year. We're going to be the beneficiary for the event. All proceeds actually go to the food bank, and we'll see that our master ceremony is going to be in the week from the Torment FC. I'm going to let Alan speak on the holiday celebration, how that all works, but we've got a committee working on it, and working real hard, and there's been a lot of work on top of what they have, so this, so, so everybody's putting in hard work into it. So, I'll let Alan speak on that.
Jeff and I and our team, the developer party as well as Jeff and his team, we put together this event, a big one. We appreciate Jason and his, Bob, and their team for helping. And of course, it wouldn't be a great event without Steve Hoskis and his famous chili dogs. That'd be a big deal. In added addition, the food bank and the Convention Rivers Bureau are kind of heading up the chili town, so it's going to be a big help. Be a lot of fun, and I hope everybody shows up.
By the way, Alan, nice scare in the square Saturday, and to all the people in the city who, I mean, all the staff that helped clean up and everything, it was, it was awesome.
There was a lot of five, six hours.
Yeah, it was overwhelming.
Yeah. Definitely a good signature of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Moore, Agenda thirteen, or... Public comments, I know that we have Mr. Simmons, that's the question, to speak, so just for my listeners, do we have anybody else's requests? Okay, I'll have to invite Mr. Simmons, please.
I'd give my mind to everyone.
Give your mind to him.
Yeah, counsel, I'm here this morning, and God, this, water damage to Simmons apartment on October the seventeenth thirty. When your lawyer, lawyer was getting to Simmons apartment, he cut the water on the apartment at six, at eight in the apartment. He cut the water on outside the door. Clock on, read on the turn, and he goes, check it. At the two thirty, I thought there even, I went to the apartment, and I got that water was coming out the door, the number six, water was coming out the door on number two, and water was coming out the door on three and four. And I immediately cut off the water, but it required actually, if anybody would have been upset, and I was, because he had, I had two apartments rented, and he admitted that it was messed up. And I came up here to sit and tell him about it, because it's such a miserable, it's something. The heroin came out, and it took pictures, brother. Then it was late Friday evening, anybody coming to dinner or whatever, got eaten, so I had to try to get somewhere from my tennis to stay. Actually, there's so much water damage, it gets a surfer charged seven thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents to get the water out that apartment, that apartment. And I felt that that was not my fault. It was the careless fault of the city worker. They could have took one or two seven, and watched the clock at that minute, if they would have told him that something in that apartment was open. So, actually, it caused me a lot of money for my tennis, they had to have some water to see that night, because they were in the apartment. I had called a surfer, they came out about, they'd find somebody coming. They came out by eight o'clock that night, and they started, they started working, they said, do a two-day job, turn out the meter, seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, sixty-two, job. But what, what I'm saying is, what I'm asking for, that it was not my fault, this was the city's fault, and one of your workers. I'm asking that the city would pay me my insurance deduction, the thousand dollars. I don't think I should have to pay a thousand dollars for something the city did. It wasn't my fault. Just the fact that I, I had to put up my, my tennis. Then I had promised them the, the, all the water that came in on their vehicles, so that's why I did I take care of that, I just paid for that. But what I'm really, I'm asking that you consider that minute. Why should I have to pay for that when it was the city did? So, I'm asking for, I'm asking the city for to pay it up.
Can I get some clarification?
Yes.
Just to make sure I understand, Mr. Simmons, somebody at the city went and cut the water off?
Yes.
A city employee, and then there was something open in the apartment, like a tub faucet or something like that?
Yeah, for, for half-foot panels. When you rent an apartment, somebody should be in the apartment before they cut the water on. And if the person not there, when you turn the light from that meter down there, if you look at it longer, you'll see it begin to turn. If it turned, there's something else open in the apartment.
So, it was like a sink or a tub was left on?
That's right. So, actually, it didn't take, that don't take three seconds. Looked to see the clock going back, moving on there, so he turned the water off, and he was, he was knowing something, something was turning and cut it on in the apartment.
I'm trying to figure out what actually caused the damage. Where was the water coming from after it was turned on?
It's coming out apartment six.
No, but where in the apartment?
It was coming out one of the valves in there, one of the toilet valves in there.
So, it came out a toilet?
Yeah, it came out a toilet valve.
Okay.
And it run, it was in number six, that's upstairs. It came down stairs to number two, then it carried all the way down to three and four. When I got there, when I, when I got there, they turned it on at two thirty. When I got there at four thirty, water was coming out the door in the fourth apartment.
So, the toilet was running over, is that right? The toilet was running over when the water got turned on?
Yes, they, it was something that, and, uh...
It sounded like it stopped, though, if that were the case.
They called that, I think that they couldn't, and what happened is, the corner, I'm making this, and if you work in a water department, you open, you turn on the water, you should have to take enough time to see, and you should know that, to look down at that meter and see if that clock is turning. If it's turning, it's an open, this is an open valve somewhere in the house, but that didn't happen. Now, that was, I think that was just careless, I don't think nobody meant to do it, but they cost me a lot of money. And I'm just, I'm asking that the city reimburse me for my, my, amount of deductible on my insurance, and probably my insurance won't go up, and it might cancel my insurance, just because it's something that I had nothing to do with. That's one of your, that's one of the city employees, your employee of the city. And this is what I'm asking for.
What's our protocol, when we turn somebody's water on, like, we ask that somebody be there?
There, no, we, we can't have somebody there at all departments. Here in College Grove, we may have two, three, and ours in one day, and that's another problem. But it is policy that whoever cuts it on, is supposed to make sure that they're stopped. Sometimes, in this case, I don't know what the situation was, I called outside of, I called my, my manager, my water supervisor called me, I got to pick up air, get pairs of our insurance, lot of the insurance, turn files, things, that's typically how we do that. But there is a form when a customer gets a order, that I have a sign that says, we're not responsible for any water, it's on damage, even though policy is they're not supposed to leave that meter, because it's stopped. We have that, we probably have three or four, would you say, there, a year maybe, where we, some of them where you cut it on, the line didn't have water, and it built the air pressure, I seen it where it is. Ice machine line blows off, meter stops, operator leaves, ice machine line blows off, I send tickets to phone off, or hit the faucets, where they actually watch the meter stop. And on this case, I don't, it sounds like you told them to stop, but if the one, you would have had a plug, and it went on down, so...
Actually, I, I don't even care, I have, I have, it's, it's still the name, that worked on the city. If you work in the water department, you open, suck it along the door, and look at that meter, and try and, if the meter is turning, there's got to be a valve somewhere in the house open. That don't take no time.
I agree.
It don't take but just a few seconds.
Sometimes it's got to have several pulvers, it's hard, they will run fast, and they're going to blow it down, they may...
So, it's still about one, that's...
They may have some, those pulvers, they'll run.
But this is the second time it's happened.
But they should stay there until it stops.
This is the second, this happened to me about six or seven years ago. He came out, turned the water on, left, flooded out apartment in the apartment, and this time he flooded out fourth apartment. Now, that's, to me, that's, if you've got a job to do, it don't take you over a second or two seconds to do, and that's just real careless. Why go to hell with the money for you, for you messed up? You know, I was, I was, I was major contractor about thirty years, and I was doing a house in the residential for the coast. And we were getting water from the, a firehouse is up there, you know, but it didn't have water in the house. So, my men would go up there and get the water from the firehouse. And so, what happened, you back there with the firehouse, and they run over, threw it down, and that, all the water came out. So, Sunday morning, home, I got a call from somebody, and they said, you owe for the water. I said, well, I don't know. He said, well, your men, and you did your job. I said, well, I don't exactly know what I do, I send insurance down there, and the insurance man, I had to pay that. I had to pay for that. And I see it the same way, this, 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 that is the same thing. You, the city is responsible for my, all my expenses that I incurred, and just somebody being careless. And I think, and I think that's another one, fair, that the only thing I'm asking, was to do, why should I pay it? My insurance is stopped, it's up, and good chance that my insurance going up. It still costs me money, it gonna cost me money. And I'm, all I'm asking is, was to get me, to do fair about it, to give me a, something about it to help me out.
I will say, this guy did his, it's not the normal guy to cut water on, I, that's typical, and somebody had a good thing, that's on the floor.
Well, let's, let's go, I think there, you said you went out and looked at it, and I, excuse me, Mr. Simmons, I do have to, I apologize. But, I mean, I'm sure this conversation will continue without me, so can you come up and say where, where we are in the situation with Mr. Simmons? What she did, where things stand?
I certainly feel for Mr. Simmons' situation, but I handled insurance claims and started the process for a quote period. With that being said, the picture that filed the claim with our insurance, and actually after, it was Friday evening, probably five, five-thirty, I actually got to touch Mr. Simmons' agent and ask him to get the touch, and he didn't leave the something that he needed for his tennis. With that being said, our insurance has to file the claim, I'm sure yours does as well. What we do at this point is, the insurance basically, they fight it out and decide who to call, and they subjugate against our carrier. And that's where it is right now. I, I wouldn't want to speak for Allen's area, but I, I would, in my opinion, I would leave it with insurance. If you step forward and you might admit, admit guilt, and make a payment unsupported by your insurance carrier, that's where you all side, but it is going to file for his insurance subjugating orders, such a resolved situation. That's where we are.
But the, my insurance can, can not, I have to pay that, in order for my insurance to do that. And actually, our insurance is in a community dialogue, I'm trying to get to cover some of my losses here. And I mean, it's not the only thing to say, the only thing to say that you can see the problem that I had in the car they caused me. I have not, I, I have not got my partner, it happened on the third September, we just about to get back up one, somebody moved in there, that cost me money. And I'm not asking for going billion dollars here, I'm just asking the city to bring my, bring my deductible. And actually, after the deductible, who knows? My insurance department going to go up anyway, we ain't going to pay nothing for that. I'm still going to have to pay it to pay it. But I didn't just want to say I'm going to move in here. I had this happen to me, but I don't know what's happening. I had this happen to me, but I don't know what's happened to some other apartment complex, it's about a different thing. But this is what I'm asking, and I don't think I'm asking anything else.
We, we certainly apologize for, uh, the hardship that caused it. Uh, it sounds like Darren's, we understand that, that you want the deductible today, and I completely understand that, we've got a broken coffee, you have to follow to, to do that, and it sounds like Darren's got that in, in progress, so, um, I was just asking Mr. Whethmore and Darren to follow back up with it, we promised we'll, we'll get a resolved decision. How about that?
You do?
I want to let you know, Simmons, I say this is my first time, and, uh, as I said, employee would get it for not, normal water out, so it was stated, it should be justified, it should be compensated, and back to the city, uh, insurance people are getting involved, they, they said, that was the same thing that happened to Mr. Simmons, it's not a policy they go through. And if the city don't pay him a thousand dollar deductible, it would cost again, so it just, it was costly. And hopefully, city manager, city staff take care of that, because I have a responsibility to get that off, basically, a amount of dollars.
Be careful not to set a precedent, exactly, uh, you have your responsibility from the meter in, it sounds like the toilet was functioning properly, so, but I'm with Darren's terms of the process, so, um, we'll have a resolution soon.
I'm going to make a difference, because people are busted parking now. Anytime you turn to the meter, if you've got anything on, just don't turn. That's what it comes out, and if you're working, you've got a job, you ought to sit long enough to look at it and see that something is open in your apartment, but that's not the first time it's happened, this is the second time this happened to me. And I asked you what the conversation was for, but this, this, the total damage is done to my apartment this time, but I mean, that, what I'm asking is not a reason, I just told you what happened, you know, and I was at the work for Mr. Oaks up there in the, in the residential. I knocked, one of my men knocked on the water meter, and that turned that, he's up the sheriff's meter, and I had to pay for that. But I don't pay me, if this, the justice, I'm not consistent with you here, but I want to put on the table. I am not asking for anything that I think I want to do, thank you.
I agree. I will make sure, Mr. Simmons' insurance, as I said, I guarantee ever contact ours or someone, you know, stay planning the subject, make sure they get it over with first time. Okay, all right. Thank you. Uh, that being said, no, no further public comments, uh, you guys want to take a two minute break? We're going to take a session. All right, so, uh, we're going to take a two minute break, uh, and we're going to go to executive session, discuss personnel and litigation. Do you want motion, motion, enter, take a session? Motion and enter into executive session. Simmons? All right, all of you better. All right, two minute break?